So, welcome to the regular Delray Oaks City Council meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, October 27. It is 6:00 on the nose. Karen, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Getzelt, here. Councilmember Gagliotti.
Here.
Councilmember Lintell.
My Jim is trying to get her hooked up. She's having a hard time. She just called me.
Okay. We'll add her when she gets on.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Clark.
Here.
Mayor Kerr. Sorry.
That's okay. So, we do have a quorum and we'll wait. Pat will join us when she can. We're going to move on to public comments. Any general public comment must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda. There will be a time limit of no more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this item and all comments will be referred to staff. Any public comments? I see Frederica's hand up. Please make sure you unmute and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. It's great to see everyone this evening. I just wanted to share what a pleasant surprise that we received on our doorstep about the Delray Oaks Mayoral Advisory Committee on Emergency Preparedness. And it was something that was really valuable to have as we have gone through the fires and much of what we experienced the summer when the fires were in our backyard, really not knowing the information or having the information at our fingertips as this provides. It came at a perfect timing and I would just like to give kudos to the mayor but also to Mary Solthing who created the brochure and printed it out and had it mailed or delivered to everybody's doorstep. I just wanted to thank you from the residents, some of my neighbors who are not able to attend the meeting tonight. We're also appreciative of this task force and the end result of this preparedness brochure. So, thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Frederica. Thank you. Also needs to go to Acting Chief Chris Porquinn for his assistance as well. He's part of the committee and so thank you. I also see Doug McKenzie.
This is Douglas McKenzie reporting from 16 Salsedo Avenue in Delray Oaks with this month's episode of the Three Minute Report. In tonight's show, we look into our very own email gate and examine emails between city staff and the airport district related to the construction of the airport district's north side access road. This reporter was recently provided with emails spanning the period from June 2017 to November 2018. Majority of the emails are between city manager Dino Pick and Michael Lapierre, the executive director of the airport district. Others involved in email exchanges include Denise Duffy and Erin Carwain of Denise Duffy and Associates, Chris Morello from the airport, and Ernie Lostrum of Lostrum &amp; Company, a real estate development company. The emails relate to negotiations between DRO city staff and two as-yet unnamed city council members in the airport district for the construction of what the airport district calls the north side access road. When constructed, the north side access road will provide access to the north side of the airport and connect to Highway 218 by way of Delray Gardens Drive. The emails make reference to road alignment, traffic counts, revenue sharing, full build-out scenarios of the north side, and the transfer of water credits to the airport to be used for future development of the north side. For example, in quoting Ernie Lostrum, "While the foyer water is Marina Coast, is the rest of DRO on Cal-Am? Maybe there's a way to look at that as a pathway to a paper transfer of water." These emails, in addition to more emails and documents obtained by this reporter from DRO, reveal the extent and scope of the discussions between DRO and the airport that extend into May of 2019 when Mr. Lapierre submitted a second request for general plan amendment to the city and commented upon the, quote, "continued discussions," unquote, with the city regarding the north side access road. As if all of this wasn't alarming enough, the city's general plan specifically sets forth as land use goals that the city, quote, "participate in the airport district to minimize impacts of airport development and its effect of the city on Delray Oaks," in that, quote, "The city ensure the future development is consistent with the general plan through the city's zoning ordinance and environmental review process," unquote. Furthermore, circulation policy C-17 of the general plan provides that the city, quote, "will not support the potential north side access from Highway 218 and Delray Gardens Drive or any airport access road through the city of Delray Oaks," unquote. The question that comes to this reporter's mind is how do those involved in these extensive negotiations with the airport reconcile their actions with the mandates of the general plan? Clearly, an amendment to the general plan was in the works and may still be for all we know. Our investigation has revealed that the conduct of city hall in this instant reflects a general disregard for the wishes of the residents of Delray Oaks as set forth in the general plan. When confirmed by the public, city staff and current and former council members vehemently and at times annually denied that there was anything to report to the public. But three minutes is not much time at all, so this concludes today's broadcast of the Three Minute Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Dennis, Alian.
Thank you. Well, I continue to be amazed at the amount of time that Mr. Douglas McKenzie has spent on this and again, I'm going to reiterate that there was impossible for anybody on the city council to have done anything with this. The meetings that he refers to, I'll admit that I was in one meeting with the airport in which they presented their general plan to us. The airport can make all the plans at once and as he correctly points out, time and time again, there is nothing in our city, it is banned, we cannot put a road through there. They were told that this airport can go ahead and make all the plans at once. There was no collusion on the part of Dino Pick or any member of the staff to do anything and behind anybody's back build a road through Delray Oaks. It just couldn't happen, could not happen, and would not happen. The airport has had inquired about process. That's why Denise Duffy was involved. Ernie Lostrum, this has nothing to do with the city of Delray Oaks. He's not acting as our representative. This is just Douglas McKenzie's fantasy in his own mind. He's tried to concoct something that wasn't there. I think it's time that he just stop this ridiculousness and let us get on with the business. There was nothing that the city did, nothing that the city council did that was in violation of any Brown Act actions. And I just get a little tired of hearing Doug pontificate. I think he likes to hear himself speak. So, please put this to bed. There was no collusion. It was impossible for the city council to have done anything outside of a public meeting and make any decisions. The airport went ahead with its own plans. We can't stop the airport from doing that. What we were trying to do was just cooperate with them in terms of, here's the process. You're not going to get any success doing this, but go ahead. Here's the process. These are just helping you understand the process. So, thank you Doug for pointing out all those emails that point to nothing, no collusion, no inappropriate activity on the part of any city council member or any city staff member. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other public comment? Pat, you're muted and...
I'm muted. I'm muted. Of course. Okay. I'm showing up as Jim Clark because I'm on his computer. Mine, I was having a problem. I couldn't get on once more after trying since a quarter of six.
I will rename you.
Okay. There I am. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other public comment? I see no hands. Nice to see a lot of people here this evening. All right. With that, we're going to move on and we're going to close public comment. So, I am thrilled that Jan Lindenthal is with us this evening. It struck me as the election goes and there's a lot of conversation about affordable housing, but I have to admit, I don't know all that there is to know. So, I reached out to Jan and who is a local authority on it and gratefully, she said yes to coming to present to us this evening. So, I want to make sure that we have access to her slides. Randy, are you ready to go? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Jan. It's all yours.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. Can everyone hear me okay? Great. Well, good evening. I'm really pleased to be here and as the mayor said, I am an 18-year resident of Pacific Grove where I live with my husband and three children. And in my day job, I work for a nonprofit that builds affordable housing. And we, the organization that I work for, Mid Penn Housing, has built a number of communities on the peninsula and in Monterey County as well as throughout the Bay Area for affordable housing. Most recently, we completed the Van Buren Senior Housing Project, which is right behind the police station in the city of Monterey that you might be familiar with. So, what I'm going to do tonight is share a little bit about this affordable housing crisis that we're facing and as I say here on the slide, how we got here and what we can do about it. And I really appreciate the opportunity to come and share this information with you and answer any questions that you may have. So, oftentimes, when I'm out in a community talking about affordable housing, and I also wanted to share that I'm a member of the city of Pacific Grove Housing Advisory Commission also. And so, oftentimes, I'm in a community setting like this, talking about affordable housing, and this is the image that comes to people's minds. This is what oftentimes people think about when they think of affordable housing. They think of the large-scale public housing projects in large cities. This is Cabrini-Green in Chicago. Or if they think of another infamous public housing project was Pruitt-Igoe in St. Louis. So, oftentimes, this is the image that people have in their mind about what affordable housing is that I have to be aware of to kind of operate against and count against. This is what affordable housing is. This is a community in Half Moon Bay, a senior housing community that the organization that I work for developed. And this is built at a very similar density to Pruitt-Igoe that you just saw at 54 dwelling units to the acre. So, it's an example of how you can build at a comparable density in a much different way that creates a much more livable environment for the residents. So, who lives in affordable housing? Well, it really serves all facets of the community, from our seniors to construction workers, our farm workers, teachers and daycare providers, and our hospitality and service workers. So, those are the people that live in affordable housing. So, one of the things that we as affordable housing developers want to do is learn from the past. What didn't work about Cabrini-Green and Pruitt-Igoe and other failed affordable housing communities? And how do we take those lessons and apply them in the future to build successful, healthy communities? So, one is that we really pay attention to design and management as well as ensuring that there are services on site for our residents. And this is a photograph here of another affordable housing community that's also built at a comparable density to Pruitt-Igoe. So, again, you can build at that density in a much more beautiful and livable way than what was done in the past. So, we think that good affordable housing starts with the right location, that you build near neighborhood amenities, near jobs, near schools and parks, and those are some of the conditions that you need for a healthy community. Also, great design, that you design for the way that large families or seniors or whoever it is that you're serving in this community live, what works for them, units that are large enough for the families with children that would be living there or with the seniors. Also, that affordable housing is designed and financed to provide for mixed income. So, rather than serving kind of a monolithic segment of the income spectrum, affordable housing is designed to serve a wide range of people earning as little as $600 a month for a senior on a fixed income to a family earning as much as $60,000 here in Monterey County, for instance. Affordable housing is also built in a very collaborative way with the community so that community organizations are involved. There's local staff working at the community, providing the property management so that the affordable housing is very much a part of the community. And finally, that it's really underwritten for long-term financial sustainability. So, one of the problems with the public housing of the past is that as many of the white residents left the cities for the suburbs and, you know, through some of the programs that the federal government had, there was increased vacancy in the public housing that they left behind and those projects weren't underwritten to adequately maintain and manage that housing. And so, that's something that we pay very close attention to. So, we're looking at the very beginning to make sure that affordable housing can be well-maintained and well-managed into the future. So, setting aside enough money to be able to replace the roof, repair, repaint the siding, things like that. So, why doesn't, so now we've talked about what affordable housing is and what it isn't, how we've tried to learn from the past, who lives in affordable housing, but why doesn't the market produce affordable housing? We need it. Why doesn't the market produce it? Well, first and foremost, because affordable housing means you're charging rents that are below market. So, you're charging a lower rent than what the market would bear. Construction costs to build that affordable housing are the same or even sometimes higher than what it costs to build market-rate housing. And there's really a couple of reasons for that. One is that when we build affordable housing, we're required to pay what's called prevailing wages. And those wages are higher than what a market-rate private developer would be paying because they don't have public funds and aren't required to pay those prevailing wages. Second, there's often extra local requirements that affordable housing is subject to. Perhaps there are some sidewalks that need to be extended or a water main that has to be extended in order to serve the property. So, there's some extra requirements that affordable housing may have to meet that a market-rate project either might not have to meet because they're building on a different type of site or it's just not something that the local government requires of them. And then oftentimes, there's design changes that we make in order to respond to neighborhood concerns that can also increase costs. For example, varying the roof line or having a facade of the building that has variety and appeal to it. And that can add cost and it also enhances neighborhood acceptance. So, we try to balance those things of being responsive to what our neighbors want to see and what they think is going to fit with their community while balancing that with cost. The operating expenses for affordable housing are comparable or sometimes higher than for market-rate housing as well because we have compliance requirements. The families and seniors who live in our communities have to meet certain income guidelines which we have to validate and verify on a regular basis and that's more costly than in a market-rate apartment complex where you qualify someone when they move in that they can afford to pay the rent and you don't have that ongoing compliance requirement. So, that combination of things where the rents are low, the costs are the same or even higher than in market-rate housing, and the expenses are the same or higher means that we have a gap between what the rents can support and what the costs are. And so, pure and simple, the market doesn't produce affordable housing because it doesn't make economic sense. It doesn't pencil. And now I'm going to share some statistics from the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership about something that we all know only too well, which is that there's a huge need for affordable housing in our community. And you can see the rent data here for the city of Monterey and the city of Delray Oaks tracks very comparably to the city of Monterey in terms of rental rates, but because there's so little rental housing in the city of Delray Oaks, there isn't a lot of data to look at here. In fact, in doing my research for this presentation tonight, I couldn't find any available units for rent when I did my research right at this moment, right now. So, that tells you that the housing market in Delray Oaks is quite tight. But what this shows is what we all are aware of, that rents in the city of Monterey, in Monterey County, in the state of California, and in the city of Salinas, as a first instance, have all increased over the last 10 years. And at the same time, wages have not. So, wages have remained effectively flat across most of the job occupations here in Monterey County. So, you have rents rising and you have wages staying pretty much flat when you take into account all of these fluctuations. This chart is a little confusing to look at, but it has some really good information on it. So, this blue bar at the top, can you see my arrow? Okay. This blue bar at the top is the median rent for a two-bedroom apartment at $2,490. And then each one of these bars is a particular occupation in Monterey County. And the red line shows what the monthly household income is for that particular occupation and the blue line shows what that occupation could pay for housing if they're only paying 30% of their income for their rent. And that is the established standard for the amount of housing, the amount of one's income that you should pay towards your rent in order to not be cost burdened. So, if you look in this example, a public administration official making $6,000 a month, 30% of their income is $1,787. So, even that person who's at the top end of the pay scale here in Monterey County would have to stretch to be able to afford that market-rate apartment. And you can see the further you go down the income scale, if you get down to accommodation and food services, you end up with someone who's making, let's say, $2,200 a month in one of those jobs. They can only afford to pay $662 per month. So, they have to really stretch and maybe pay almost all of their monthly income towards their rent in order to be able to afford it. And so, what that means then is families are having to take much more of their income towards their rent, meaning that there's less available for food and saving for their kids to go to college and all of those other monthly expenses that we all have. So, who can afford to live here on the Monterey Peninsula? Overall, in Monterey County, you need an income of about $80,000 to afford the average two-bedroom apartment. And here on the peninsula, you need $100,000 income, total household income, to afford the average two-bedroom apartment. So, as I walked through before, we talked through, why doesn't the market produce affordable housing? You've got rents are low, costs are high, you have this gap here. How do we fill that gap? Well, the way that we do that is through different sources of public subsidy and that's really what's needed. So, when you have a broken market like the housing market is in this example, it requires public investment. And the way that the affordable housing system is developed is through the low-income housing tax credit program by and large. So, this is a Reagan-era program. It was part of the Tax Reform Act of 1986 that facilitates public-private investment in affordable housing. And this is a program that was set up kind of in direct response to the public housing of the past, which was 100% public-financed. So, the tax credit program says, let's create a way to subsidize affordable housing by attracting private investment to help build it. And the way that private investment is attracted is through a tax credit. So, a nonprofit developer applies to the state for an allocation of tax credits. They receive those credits and then they sell those to an investor who needs the credits. And typically, those are large corporations or large major banks. So, Google has invested in tax credits, large banks like Union Bank, Bank of America, Wells Fargo, they're all large purchasers of tax credits. In fact, Bank of America was the tax credit investor in the Van Buren Senior Housing Project that I mentioned earlier. And there's two different types of credits that are available through the federal government. One is the 9% tax credit, which the only difference between the 9% credit and the 4% credit is the level of tax credit subsidy. So, the way that plays out into financing a project is here. This blue box that you can see is the portion of the total development cost of the project that's financed by the tax credits. So, as I mentioned, in the 9% tax credit program where it's a deeper subsidy, there's more tax credits provided in that program and it's also a lot more competitive and very limited, but in that program, that tax credit equity is financing about 60% of the total project cost. And the mortgage, the perm debt, which is the portion of the project cost that's financed by the rents themselves, is only 11%. So, what you have in this example is 60% of the cost comes from the tax credits, 11% comes from the mortgage that the rents can support, and that leaves the difference of about 29% that's funded through a combination of other public sources. So, in the case of Van Buren Senior Housing, that came in the form of a donation of land that the property sits on and through some state sources that we were able to secure to help build that. So, in each affordable housing project, we're kind of patching together different sources to make up the total cost. Now, when we are not able to secure the 9% tax credit, we use the 4% tax credit program, which is less competitive, but it's also a shallower subsidy. So, instead of financing 60% of the cost in this example, it only finances 30% of the cost, which means you need a lot more other sources to make up that gap. And one thing I wanted to note, and this is interesting, I think, I don't know what you'll think, but under the 9% tax credit program, there's a special set aside for rural communities. And that tends to be, it's a fairly large pot of credits and it's less competitive because it's available statewide but only for rural areas. And under the state's tax credit program guidelines, the city of Delray Oaks is considered rural. So, that's a huge advantage that you have here in the city of Delray Oaks to leverage this precious tax credit as a rural community. So, that's a very unique competitive advantage that you have here. So, how did we get here? How did we get to the situation where we have so much need for affordable housing and so little of it produced? Well, a couple of things happened in the 2000s. One is, as you know only too well, because your redevelopment agency was eliminated as part of this, in 2011, Governor Brown eliminated redevelopment agencies statewide. And that meant $1 billion less in funding for affordable housing statewide. And that's because, and you probably all know this, that when, under the former redevelopment law, agencies had to set aside 20% of the tax increment they received each year for affordable housing. So, when redevelopment agencies were eliminated, so was that 20% set aside. So, it was a huge loss of funding for affordable housing right at the time that we were climbing our way out of the recession. So, jobs started getting created and there were no resources to build affordable housing. So, there was a huge mismatch between, as the need was growing over the last 10 years and the lack of resources. And in fact, there hadn't been until 2018 any funding at the state level since 2006. So, for a small community like Delray Oaks where you had a redevelopment agency but still relatively small city, you're relying on those state sources and the state hadn't had any new affordable housing funds since 2006. There also, we were in a recession. It was tough times. There were budget cuts at the federal level. So, it's kind of this perfect storm of, for us in particular in California, where we were some of the first communities to come out of the recession and see a lot of job growth, there wasn't that investment in affordable housing to go along with it. So, it made the mismatch between jobs and housing that much worse. So, a couple of good... So a couple of good things happened. In 2016, the governor of California, Jerry Brown, the same one who eliminated redevelopment agencies, did something that was good for housing, which is he signed a historic housing package that created a number of really important tools that we are now seeing local governments use quite often to build affordable housing. So a lot of these tools were designed to help streamline development while still allowing for local control. And we have now used several of these tools multiple times in collaboration with cities. So we're seeing them more and more being embraced by cities as helpful tools that cities can use to build affordable housing. 2016 also established a permanent source for affordable housing, and that's through the document transfer tax. And that money is just starting to come out. And I know a bunch of cities got together and partnered with the county of Monterey to apply for an allocation of those funds that will go into a Monterey County Housing Trust Fund. So we're seeing some of those resources now come into our communities. It also allowed communities to reinstate inclusionary housing programs, which was something that had been outlawed up to that point. So when you're approving a large market rate development, you now have the ability again to include an affordable housing component of that. And that ability for local governments to do so had been really restricted under prior laws. And then in 2018, some more good news. Housing was at the top of the state's agenda, and there were two propositions on the ballot at that time that created $7 billion for affordable housing statewide. Now, that was passed in November of 2018. The first of those dollars finally started getting allocated this year, so 2020. So it took a very long time for the state, in my opinion, for the state to get those dollars out the door. And you know, part of that is just the bureaucratic process. You've got to issue the bonds, and so the voters approve it, but then you have to get the regulations together and be ready to actually deploy the capital. But this all happened at a time when our affordable housing crisis was just getting worse and worse and worse. So that's been a source of frustration in terms of, yes, the money has been approved and it's there, but the state hasn't been able to release it at a pace to really address the need. A couple of other things that happened in 2018 and 2019 is some additional state laws that further gave local governments tools to use to maximize production of affordable housing. That's AB 1763 and AB 2162. And we're using both of these tools on projects in Santa Cruz County right now and up in the Bay Area as well. So I know you know only too well what this chart is all about in terms of the regional housing need. And the upshot of this is that the need far outstrips our ability to produce units. And for the city of Delray Oaks, your regional housing needs allocation is relatively small. And it's also still very difficult to develop. Although it's a relatively small number, that you're within striking distance of being able to actually achieve, which is great, it's still very difficult to develop in the city due to a lack of land and available sites primarily. The price of not building affordable housing is one that we all pay every day. So think of affordable housing as a way to mitigate this, that if we can get people closer to their jobs, that's fewer cars on the road. So 31,000 or 85% of all the workers that commute to the Monterey Peninsula don't live here. So there's 31,000 people commuting into the peninsula. That's all the cities on the peninsula combined to work. 60% of them commute more than 10 miles to work each day. So that means they're not coming from relatively close by. 26% commute more than 50 miles. And you can imagine where they're coming from. They're coming from in the very southernmost tip of Monterey County, and they're coming to the east, San Benito County. And 57% of the workers commuting in to the Monterey Peninsula earn less than $40,000 a year. So they're nowhere close to being able to afford that averaged-priced apartment that we talked about, where you need at least $100,000 to afford on the peninsula. And so what this looks like for the city of Delray Oaks, this is a resource site called On the Map through the U.S. Census that I found really interesting. You can get some fascinating information in it. And so what this is showing is there's 232 jobs in the city of Delray Oaks. And 231 of the people holding those jobs commute into the city every day to work. So 99% of the people who work here have to commute in. 72% of them earn less than $40,000 a year. So it's even worse than it is for the Monterey Peninsula as a whole. And 37% of those folks commute more than 25 miles to work each day. So that's the dynamic that's happening just in the city of Delray Oaks alone. And obviously, the ripple effects of that are that we have people who can't afford a home at all, let alone an affordable one. So where are we now? You know, we have this housing crisis. We have some resources at the state level, although the states had challenges getting those resources out the door. And now we're in the middle of a pandemic. So pre-COVID, there was tremendous public awareness of the crisis. People recognized, everyone has a story. They know someone who's struggling with being able to afford the rent or under threat of eviction because the landlord keeps raising the rent or their kids aren't going to be able to buy a home in their community because of the cost of homes. So there's a huge awareness of the crisis itself. Communities also are starting to take advantage of the permanent source funding that I mentioned earlier, the SB 2 funding. And in Monterey County, that's the Monterey County Regional Housing Trust that's being formed and funded. We have a new pro-housing state governor in Governor Newsom. So there's opportunity for regulatory reform, there's new programs, and there's inexperienced and inadequate staff at the state, which means the state hasn't been able to get the resources out on the street at the time that they're needed, as I mentioned earlier. And so there's tremendous pent-up demand for the resources that are there, which means there's also tremendous competition for those resources. In Monterey County, what we see is a threefold increase in requests for food assistance, increased requests for rental assistance. And COVID-19 has really exposed the digital divide, something that we, or at least I'll speak for myself, hadn't really thought a whole lot about until now. You think of, pretty much everyone's got a cell phone these days. But when you look at that internet bill each month at your home and how expensive that is and how difficult that is for families if they're barely able to afford the rent to then also have internet in their home. So they may have a cell phone, but they don't have internet to connect their computer to. And that's something that this current crisis has really exposed. So some of the solutions that are on the horizon to deal with some of these impacts is statewide AB 3088, which includes provisions to protect tenants from eviction and rent increases and also protects tenants from eviction due to non-payment of rent during the coronavirus pandemic. And there's also been, as we know, some federal stimulus dollars. And the unemployment benefits, until they ran out at the end of July, were really helping to keep people in their homes. So now those benefits have largely gone away, but people are protected by AB 38. It doesn't protect the landlords, though, who now are not getting the rent. So previously landlords at least, tenants were able to pay the rent. Now tenants can't be evicted for non-payment of rent, which is a good thing, but landlords aren't able to recoup the rent from the tenants the way they could when the unemployment benefits were flowing. So where do we go from here? You know, we think that in a time of crisis, opportunity can come from that. Part of the dynamic that was really driving up the cost of producing housing was the construction costs because there was so much competition for the limited labor that we have. So when there's a lot of commercial or office construction happening, which is a good thing in terms of jobs, but it takes the limited pool of construction workers that we have and puts all of those folks working on that and not on housing projects. So we've had a terrible time getting construction workers for our housing jobs up till now. Now we're finding that to be a lot easier. And in Monterey County, where our pool of construction workers is small to begin with, that's a real challenge. We also have an opportunity to strategically look at how can we preserve multifamily housing that may come on the market? Maybe there's a landlord that says, you know what, I want out now because the tenants aren't paying. I can't afford to maintain my property, but now's a good time for me to sell. Well, that's an opportunity to be able to acquire that property from that landlord at a fair market price and preserve that housing for the people who live there. There's a lot of effort, as we know, on the peninsula, challenges and opportunities to look at the regional solutions that we need for water. And something that I want to leave you with is thinking about how Monterey County as a whole could come together and consider putting a housing bond on the ballot in 2022. This is something that Santa Cruz looked at in 2018, and the housing bond lost by a hair. I think they will come back around, Santa Cruz County will, and put it back on the ballot probably in 2022. And it's something that in Monterey County was also looked at back in 2018. And there didn't seem to be the public support for it at that time, but I believe will be an opportunity to reconsider that in the future. And that would be a countywide bond that would give the county its own source of significant funding for affordable housing to really move the needle on this crisis. So I know I just threw a lot at you. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have and really appreciate your attention.
Jan, that was amazing. I loved how you pulled in some data about Delray Oaks as well. So what I'd like to do is open it up for council to begin with questions. John, any questions?
No, but I do really appreciate, Jan, I mean, this was fascinating. And I really do appreciate the time you put into giving us, like the mayor said, the Delray Oaks specific kind of information. And I mean, I don't have any answers, but it's always good to know more information. I mean, I think the issue is daunting, and I think that we've been kind of banging our heads on it for a number of years since I've been on this council. And so other than that, I really don't have anything to add. Thank you so much.
Thanks, John. Louise?
Again, thank you very much. It was very interesting. I looked over it in the packet and, you know, the additional tweaks and bits that you added to it really makes it, I can't say easier to understand, more understandable. It's obviously not something that's easy and it's not something that's going to happen overnight, but it does give a kind of a, not a roadmap necessarily, but at least some ideas of how to go about making sure that we take care of those people who do a great job supporting us. You know, we love going out to eat or, you know, we love this area. And without those workers, we need to support our workers. And I think this is a great way of doing it. And as you also pointed out, I had someone approach me a while ago about our undeveloped land and concern about the housing out there and how much the traffic was going to be worse when we put houses out there. And I'm going like, we have bad traffic now. It's going out in the evenings and coming in in the mornings. At least it's probably less environmentally impactful to have somebody living on this land than it is having them commute 100 miles round trip every day. Thank you again very much.
Thanks, Louise. Pat?
Yes, Jan, that was an outstanding presentation, very complete. And like others have said, including some statistics on Delray Oaks, I appreciated that. And our only opportunity as far as land is concerned is to build affordable housing on our former foretoward properties. And I hope that will happen in the not-too-distant future. I did have one question. One of the earlier slides, it was, costs were increased because of design changes to appease neighbors. I would hope that prior to start of construction, you would have contacted neighbors and worked all that out so that there wouldn't need to be any major, major changes, you know, checking with the residents and et cetera.
Yes, all of that work happens upfront, but sometimes there are design changes that we make during that planning process that increase costs. And, you know, I'm of two minds of that because I feel like it's really important that neighbors be able to have input into the design of properties that are going to be built in their neighborhood. I mean, that's really important. And it's also really important, if a community is going to invest resources of any type in affordable housing, that people are able to provide input into what that's going to look like and that they feel like it's in keeping with the character of their neighborhood. But sometimes that can mean that you are adding some embellishments to the design that you otherwise might not have in order to maintain costs. So it's not that the cost happened during construction. It's that as you're going through that process of seeking public input, you're making changes to the design in response that can increase costs.
Okay, so you're talking about prior to construction then?
Right.
Oh, all righty. Thanks for clarifying that. I appreciate it. And thank you again for this outstanding presentation. And like I say, I hope we can contribute to the remedy of this situation in the near future.
Thanks, Pat. Kristin, any comments, questions?
I just wanted to say it was an excellent presentation, extremely thorough. Some of the other problems that I see is...
Could you move closer to the computer for sound?
Can you hear me now?
It's okay. Yes.
I'll try this.
That's better. Sorry about that.
It was an excellent presentation. And I think I agree with Louise. I would really like to see workforce housing, people that work in our city, you know, to have first priority for that type of housing here. I think we've got a couple of problems. There's a lack of water. And I think another big problem that you're going to see, and I've talked to some folks that were getting ready to build a new house, and they said the materials for the housing has doubled. So the materials are another big problem that's happening as of just recently, within this last year. And I guess some of the concerns I have about affordable housing is what happens with future major repairs? You know, I don't like to see, you know, everybody wants to see this housing go up, but then, you know, how do you keep it up so that it stays nice within our neighborhoods also and remains in good repair and landscaping and that it remains looking nice? Those are my big questions. I did hear recently that the mayor was talking about having affordable housing down there by the church, which I had several people contact me with big concerns regarding that. And they were not happy about it, I should say, actually. So I have concerns about that and where our housing is going to go because we have a lot of residents that are concerned about that, too.
There's several really good questions there. So the first one around a priority for people who work in the community. So because of that... So because of that nexus, and it's exactly what I think Louise was talking about earlier, that nexus between people that would otherwise be commuting in and the public benefit that's created by eliminating that and getting people closer to their jobs. So that's generally considered by the attorneys that want to make sure you're following fair housing to say, if you're prioritizing people who work in the community but don't live there now, then that has the added public benefit of decreasing greenhouse gas emissions by getting people closer to their jobs. And so that's like an overriding consideration or a mitigation for creating that preference. So that's something that's very, very common for cities to do for exactly the reason that you mentioned. And then in terms of your comment about the long-term maintenance, that was the point I was trying to make about what was wrong with the original affordable housing, public housing, versus the way that affordable housing is financed today. And so part of the underwriting of every community are those future reserves. So that's baked into the way that the financing is structured so that you are setting aside money each year. So in year 10, when it's time to repaint, or year 15 or 20, when it's time to replace the roof, you have the money set aside for that. And so that's something that our lender requires and that, you know, it's just baked into the way that the project is financed to begin with. Because the rents are lower, you have to make sure that's all factored in because you can't increase the rents in order to be able to make those repairs in the future. So it's essential that that all be factored in in the beginning. So it's a really good, really good thing to be concerned about, and it's something that is, you know, is very integral to the way that we design and manage and finance our communities. And if you wanted to see, there's several affordable housing communities that you may not even know that they're affordable to give you a sense of how properties are maintained. So there's one out on Reservation Road that's part of the East Garrison Community. It's about 66 units there, that Mid-Pen built back in 2010. So if you drive into the East Garrison Community off Reservation, you'll, you can see, it's white with red roof. You can see the affordable housing kind of tucked in there. And then there's the Van Buren Senior Housing behind City Hall, another example. That was finished about four years ago. And then the Senior Housing at Lover's Point in Pacific Grove, that was built over 17 years ago now, I think 2003 that was completed. And so those are examples of communities where you can see for yourself, judge for yourself, the quality of the long-term maintenance. Hopefully, what you see satisfies your concern or the concerns that community members might have.
Let's go back with that one. So, yeah, I guess if you can't raise the rents and even like now the price of lumber is doubling, how are we going to, how are we then going to do those repairs if you're only setting aside a certain amount of money and now things have doubled or tripled, you know, and now it's become a big eyesore?
Yeah. Jan, can you talk a little bit about the management structure that you and I spoke of?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so there's a couple things there. I mean, we, the amount that we're setting aside each month takes that into consideration, some degree of inflation. Now, obviously, there's going to be peaks and valleys in inflation that, so we're planning for an average amount of inflation over a 15, 30-year period. So all of these communities are designed for a minimum of 55 years. There's restrictions on the property that require that they be maintained for affordable housing for that time period. So we've got to invest in quality upfront and maintain them over that time period so that they are meeting that need for that 55-year period. So that means that analysis that we do of how much we need to set aside has to take that into account, you know, both the inflation and the cost of doing the work as well as that long-term horizon. And then the other way that we mitigate at the organization that I work for is that we do the property management ourselves. So we're doing preventative maintenance every year that's part of our operating cost where we're going in, inspecting the apartments, making sure smoke detectors work, making sure there aren't any window leaks or, you know, anything like that. And keeping that like close eye on the condition of the building is another way that you can make sure that you stay on top of an issue that if you just let it go and weren't paying attention to it, it will snowball into a much more expensive repair down the road. So that really conscientious maintenance and, what's the word I want to say, really sharp underwriting, you know, where you're trying to manage your risk by making sure that you're really taking into account what the future needs of the building are going to be. And for a nonprofit like the one that I work for, we have to make sure that that property always looks good because that's how we're judged by the community. So we have a real vested interest in making sure that we're set up for success right from the get-go, just for that reason.
Louise, did you have another question, comment?
Yes, two things. Jan, you know, I'm one of the few, actually, I think I'm the only one on the city council and probably one of the only one participants that lives in the condominium development here in Delray Oaks, and I'm on the board. So I'm very much familiar with what in the condominium world is called the reserve study, and it estimates out on repairs and what it's going to cost you in 10 years to put in that new light fixture or in 20 years to put on that new roof. So I definitely understand how that system works. And it's very important to the condominiums here and would be very important to any person who has any type of rental property. Actually, they should be, people should be doing it with their own homes, too, but unfortunately don't do that. The one comment or question, I'm not sure. I was out of town, and while I was gone, I happened to be looking at some homes with a girlfriend in Florida, and one of their developers has pre-approved plans. So in that case, single-family homes, but the county has pre-approved those plans so that as long as the home buyer doesn't change any of the walls, the county has a basically fast-tracks approval of the construction. So does Mid-Pen and any other nonprofit that has, that does this type of construction? Or do you have basically almost, I can't say, well, almost off-the-shelf plans that are pretty much, and that, I mean, that's a cost-cutting thing, not only time and effort, too.
Yeah, that's a really good question. We strive for that, but, and, you know, it's, not every plan is appropriate for every community, so there's always some adaptation that needs to happen there. And every site is a little bit different, you know, it might have funny angles to it or whatever, but what we've done is to kind of design certain modules that will fit together that allow us to take that basic plan and modify it for a particular site. And if it's a two-story design versus a three-story or a four-story design, so we, it works more like modules than it does an actual building. But it's, that's, we're always striving for that, and it's hard because it's not, you know, as cookie cutter as, you know, it could be if it was, every lot was perfectly flat and square, you know? But it's a really good point.
Yeah, well, I was in Florida, and every lot was perfectly flat and square.
All right. So the one thing that you and I spoke about that I didn't hear a lot of in here that is, that is relevant to Delray Oaks is elderly folks on a fixed income. I saw some data, it must have been census data, that there's quite a few people that currently live in Delray Oaks that are under the poverty line. They may be house-rich but cash-poor. And so some of the options, is the Pacific Grove one that you worked on, the senior housing?
Yes.
Okay. If you guys have an opportunity, go look at it. I looked at housing for my father, and between that and Carmel Foundation, I mean, they're beautiful apartments, and I think the wait lists have been closed because they're so wanted. But, you know, one option, so the Carmel Foundation does them where you have to live in Carmel for two years, and then you can be eligible if you want to sell your house and move into a one-bedroom or one-floor house, smaller house, things like that. So those were some, just ideas we were, we were talking about. The other thing that I'm seeing, and I don't know if you're getting into this or not, but I think the pandemic and kind of how we live in our communities are going to change. And I'm watching Monterey in particular, it may not be relevant for us, but taking former commercial buildings and modifying those into housing units like that out by the airport. Do you ever consider that kind of project or something ready-made?
We do. And oftentimes, we can use that ground floor space for the common space, so it could be the leasing office, the community room. So it still has that commercial look on the ground floor, but then the upper floors are residential or perhaps the space behind. So if that you really want that commercial look on the street, you can achieve that through that kind of an approach.
So that could be used in the light industrial area if those businesses were ever to move out to four-door. That kind of adaptation is clever and creative. I want to go out to the public, Jan, if you have a few more minutes, to see if we have anybody with some questions in the public. Anyone have a question or comment for Jan? I am not seeing any hands. Randy, are you? Okay, so any, we'll come back to the council. Any last-minute thoughts? Pat?
Yes, Jan, has ever considered when a unit is vacated that at that point, the rent could be raised in conjunction with the inflation rate of the year in order to help cover costs of maintenance?
We are able to increase the rents based on the area median income for that particular county. So at the time that someone moves out, we can take the rent up to the maximum that we could charge based on the increase in median income during that time period. And obviously, it would have to be a rent that was still affordable, but we're, because the rents are restricted, we can't take the rent up to market. It's still restricted by whatever the income limit is in the county, and we stay within that, but we can make that kind of an adjustment that doesn't impact the current resident, but allows us to catch up when a unit is, turns over.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, well, I think that's it. Jan, thank you again for the wonderful presentation and starting the conversation.
Yes, thank you for the invitation and for your interest, and I hope this was helpful, and I'm pleased to be here, so thanks so much.
All right. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on, actually, to the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to pull anything on the consent agenda? Okay, anyone in the public like anything to be pulled from the consent agenda? I'm not seeing any hands. I just want to mention that item C3, the Resolution Authorizing Funding Applications for the REAP Grant, that is the second part of the housing element grant that is being run through AMBAG. And so we've already received part of that, but this is for another $65,000, so it's very appropriate for the conversation we're having. So without any other questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
I'll second it, that's fine, John.
John moved, and Kristin seconded. And Karen, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Getzelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Lintell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Kerr?
Yes. All right, the consent agenda unanimously approved. We're going to move on to new business, where we'll review the Delray Oaks Police Department's strategic plan. Acting City Manager Hoyn or Acting Police Chief Borquin?
Chris, I'll just say something really quick, and I'll turn it over to the acting chief. First of all, I just want to point out that we have Acting Chief Chris Borquin, and I'd like to point out in public that he has stepped into the role of police chief quite capably, and I just wanted to thank him tonight for taking care of that side of the building while I'm on this side of the building. This is a long-term plan. The only thing I'll say about it before I turn it over to Chris is it's a lot easier to, and a lot quicker to turn the boat around. Sometimes it takes a lot more effort and a lot more time to get where you want to sail it to, and we're in the process of that, and this is what the strategic plan is all about. So Chris, good luck. Your performance review depends on how you do.
Thank you very much, chief. Randy, if you could just put up the first slide, I'll give you some time to do that. While we are waiting, I guess we'll call it irony, but, so the chief, the chief, he's sitting over on the other side of the room, worked months and months and months, and years, actually, on this plan, and now doesn't get to talk about it. So I feel for him, but I'm going to try to make him proud. I just want to thank the mayor and city council for letting me talk to you a few minutes. So when the chief started talking to me about a strategic plan, I was like, what is that? And we started talking about why. And there are a lot of reasons why, but it provides a roadmap to meet our goals, and we'll talk about what our goal is later. It's, I'll tell you now, we won't keep it a secret. We want to be a model small-town police department, nothing more, nothing less. It provides for accountability, establishes best practice for our department, it provides transparency, is this is going to be posted on our website. You ever want to know what your police department's doing, all you got to do is go onto our website and take a look. And it also provides clarities to members of this department. That's one thing I love about working for. I'm just going to call him my chief because it's going to be weird if I don't. So I like, I'm one of those people that likes to know what the plan is, where we're going, what you want me to do, what we need to do, what's important, what's not, and this does that. It makes it really easy for me. Randy, if you could move to the next slide. All right, so this is what Chief Hoyn did or dealt with over these time periods. So he conceptualized it back in 2017, started drafting, and I saw every draft. We had parts and pieces, and it came together just perfectly in the end. I didn't see how it was going to fit, but it fits like a book. So we finished it just this year. It's been published. I believe all council has a copy of it. If you don't, we can certainly get you one. We're still working on completing tasks in it. It will take time. There are over 200 tasks, and I'll talk a little bit later about where we got those from and why, how. So I guess it's not online yet, but it will be in the next couple of weeks. Randy? All right, new and old. So on the left, you'll see our old badge, and on the right, our new badge. It was important to Chief Hoyn that we really did rebrand ourselves, and I think that's a good thing. They do it in the public sector, or I should say, private sector all the time, and I think it's important that cities do the same as well. We were, back in the day, and most of you know I've been here quite a while... We were, back in the day, and most of you know, I've been here quite a while, we were kind of stuck in our old ways, you know? We weren't looking to change with the times. That's something that Chief Hoyn has really helped us with. We've changed our emphasis in terms of allocating resources, what we were spending money on before and what we use it for now, night and day. It's, it's important, you can, you can spend money as a police department, there's no doubt. I'd much rather spend it on a good piece of equipment that will last a long time or training for our officers than some of the stuff that we used to spend it on. So I for one, I'm happy about that and I know that others were, are happy as well. And we also didn't have a strategic plan back then. We, we lived day to day as a police department. We didn't have a direction. Now we do. So these are mission, vision and values that we have. I'll talk about each one of them for just a minute or so. The mission, the best way to think about the mission is that it is what we do every day. So I like the way my chief puts that. Professional law enforcement, what does that mean? We adhere to best practices standards, we're appropriately equipped, trained, or engaged with our community. And we'll talk a little bit later about our actual strategic goals as they apply. In terms of the vision, a model town, a model small town police department, that's important. You don't want to be something that you're not. We will not be a large city police department. We will not have the resources for that. I was checking earlier just for the fun of it. So in terms of police departments nationwide, full-time staff, 22% of them are non-sworn. That means they're civilians. They don't carry a gun, they don't carry a badge. They help get done what needs to, to get done. And I'll point out some of those areas that non-sworn is working a little bit later. When you're talking about part-time, 56% of them are non-sworn. Delray Oaks has currently zero non-sworn and we anticipate zero non-sworn in the future, at least near future. That's why getting this plan right, you need the cops who are out patrolling, doing the day-to-day law enforcement job, also have many other responsibilities. They're all laid out in here. And the values, dedication, service, accountability, we talk about those all the time. When one person succeeds, every person succeeds. When one person fails, we all fail. And we're happy with that. I make mistakes all the time. I point it out to new guys so that they understand that it's okay. And if you're not making mistakes, you're not trying hard enough, really. So I'm happy to point them out. If you ever want to know what Chris did wrong last night, just ask me, I'll tell you. All right, Randy? Okay, the strategic plan is how we reach our vision. Randy, go ahead. These are the pillars. These are the pillars that will hold up our department, that will make us or help us to reach our goals. I'm going to go over some specific ones later. I can read them off to you, but I don't think that's a lot of fun. They're all super important. What I will do is point out to you what some non-sworn positions would be like, for instance, property and evidence, facilities, equipment. There's a lot of, of things on here that non-sworn would do that we actually do for ourselves. Okay, so the task list, in the back of your bound strategic plan, you'll see a list, some of which are green, some of which are red, some of which are blue. They're in states of getting through them. The green ones are complete, of course. So where did we get those? We got them from three sources. The Beamer report, when we, before the chief got here, when our last city, when our police chief left, Chief Belcher, who some of you got to meet, some of you didn't, was our chief. And part of his job as being police chief is also to do an assessment of the department. And he produced a document with, with some things that he believed needed, needed to be worked on. So that was incorporated into this list of things, as well as a 21st, the task force on 21st century policing, which was an Obama, President Obama period report. We gathered things from that. And also we did an assessment of just the members of our department to see where we felt we needed some improvement or some things that we needed to do. So we combined those together. Some of the stuff in there, it was just not doable for a small department, just impossible. Some of the stuff is for different types of departments, maybe federal agencies. So that will be in red. But you can see there's a lot more green coming. We're probably 50% of the way there, I would say. And we invite you to look on the website when we get it up there and you can track our progress. We got a lot, a lot to do, but we're excited about going there. All right, so let's talk about department and personal development. So this really is an umbrella. This is where we want to create our, our culture, our new culture, our rebranded culture, and talk about values, service to the city, doing the right thing every time, at least we try to. That's all you can ask of somebody. You want to be accountable and we want to treat each other well. It's so important. I know that a lot of you are watching the news, there are some folks that are very hard on police departments, rightfully so often. We're harder on ourselves than anybody could be on us, believe that. And we wouldn't have it any other way. It's nothing new either. Cops have always been that way. I don't know what it is, we just, I don't know, we're like sharks in the water sometimes. But we keep each other accountable, which is good. So part of this is equipment, resources, training that's provided, and career advancement. We want to help people accomplish their goals in law enforcement. This isn't just a job. We want to help people move up when it's time. I'm getting old, someone's going to have to do my job someday. And I'm happy to help them learn what they need to learn, get trained in what they need to get trained. And we want to build leaders. Leadership training is super, super important. Chiefs wants to, and we have been, when COVID hit, it kind of put a little brakes on things. But the FBI leader course, which is a great leadership course, I think we've, four or five, or maybe even six of us have gone already and we plan on sending everybody. Because, you know, I was a good follower as well. You got to be a, be a good follower if you're ever going to be a good leader. But we want these people to, to take the reins someday and, and again, we can't be here forever. Another thing we do, which has been super helpful, is all-hands meetings. We didn't have meetings in the old days. And I remember our first meeting was pretty much the, probably the week or two after city manager started here, Dino Pick. And then after the chief started, we started these all-hands meetings right away, probably twice a year. We have speakers come in. We recently did a, a, we had a speaker that talked to us about autism, it was great. He's well-versed in, in just different ideas about having or being able to speak with different types and different kinds of people. And we want to have him back. It wasn't all about autism, it's about people, really. And then we also have team leadership meetings. We have those once a month. It's the sergeants, myself and the chief. And we talk mostly about what's in this bound, bound deal. That's, that's what we do. What needs to be done, where are we, and where are we headed? Investigations, this is new and I really, I don't know where it came from, but one day the chief started talking about a patrol detective program. And I'd never heard of such a thing. I've heard of detectives, of course. But our huge problem in, back in the day was that we had no people to investigate outside of Delray Oaks. So often somebody comes to us in Delray Oaks and says, something's happened to me, I need some help, someone used my credit card. Getting the resources to go even out of the county wasn't possible. Also, a lot of these investigations, you need more than one person, you need, you need a team. And with this new program that's been put together, we've already started using it. And we've had three recent successes that all kind of toot our horn about. But we solved a residential burglary that occurred in the city of Delray Oaks, search warrant served in Salinas and property from the burglary recovered. Unfortunately, not all of it, but we have two suspects in custody on that. And we had a couple window smashes where people smashed somebody's window at the frog pond, unbelievably, and stole wallets. And we saw both of those as well. And all three of them, the patrol detective program was worked. And what it does is it allows a lot of attention, certainly from one person, to, you can pull him out of what he's doing regularly, put him, assign him to this case specifically, and he will run with it. He, he reports to a sergeant. He also has other officers that he can ask to complete tasks for him. And that's really helped because we get on them fast when we get the case. And we've been really closing them, I would say, within a week. Within a week, we've solved who's done it anyway. Sometimes it takes longer to find the guy or girl, as it may be. The program's going to be successful, I've no doubt. So currently, Chris Moore, one of our new officers, is, is working on getting trained. There are many courses for criminal investigators. Unfortunately, with COVID, all courses that were falling under ICI, which is investigations for investigator or classes training for investigators, were pretty much shut down for a while. But we're going to send them next month to the very first course. It's a core course, it's the one that you have to take before you can take any other ones. But the chief's interest is having his investigators trained in as many different crime areas as possible, let's just call them so, sexual assault or maybe internet crimes. There are so many different ones that, that we can train in, but we, we want to train our people as best we can to be successful. And so far, it's unbelievable. I'll be honest, we haven't had, I haven't had success like this, three in a row like that, ever since I've been here. So I know it's only three, but it's a big deal to us. And last is training. So I am the, technically the current training manager. I'm passing over my reins to Sergeant Perez. Important about training, our budget in the, we'll just call them the olden days, it's been increased about three times. Why, you, the, the cost of training, what you get out of it is so much more. The resources are out there. And when I talk about training, it's not just training that we have to pay for. We do, let me list a few of the trainings that we do. Airport security training, we have to do that because we work at an airport now. Supervisor training, evidence management, record supervisor training, FBI leader, which I spoke about before, force options training. We get training from the FBI and the DOJ, we had that just last week. We train in briefing. We also train online and on a post portal. We're constantly, constantly, constantly talking about training. It, for me, is the biggest change probably in our department in terms of results, real results that you see from people that become more highly trained are better to handle situations. And it really is the backbone of our department. Randy? All right, well, I did my best to get through that. I would love to answer some questions. Would anybody have any?
Let's, let's start with the council. Any questions, comments? Pat?
Yes, I, I don't have a question, but I, I would thank the, Chris, for such a nice presentation. I do happen to have a copy of that strategic plan and have devoted quite some time to reviewing it. And I am so impressed with the number of things that have already been accomplished. And I just kudos to our chief, our acting chief, and to all the officers in our PD. Thank you so much.
Louise?
It's great. I mean, I've got 32 years' experience as in the law enforcement field and this is an excellent document and an excellent way forward. And I'm so glad, I was so frustrated under the pre-previous regime, that I'm so happy to have Jeff Hoyn in the leadership and Chris growing and becoming more and more of a leader and not being stymied. And it's great to see, and I think we're, we're well on the road to, to, it's a road that's never going to end because we're always going to be training and there's always, technology is always going to change. And as soon as we figure out how something was done, they are going to find a different way of doing it. We're going to have to learn that. But it's great and I greatly appreciate all their effort.
Sean?
Yeah, first of all, I mean, the plan was amazing. It was, it's the first plan that I've actually read. And what, what kind of gave me great kind of pride was that it was started long before kind of all the hijinks and kind of focus, national focus as well as even regional and local focus on, on issues elsewhere. And so it was just kind of a nice, well, you guys have been way ahead of the game. And so that I totally appreciate. And, and to that, Jeff, thank you so much and, and Chris, you know, for caring, helping out and filling in and then, and then picking it up and running with it. I did have one specific that I didn't see in there, and it may be just because this, this plan is more kind of high-level and not, not necessarily as granular. But when I was growing up in Delray Oaks, we had a, we had a, what is it, a youth officer. And he, he started out younger, you know, he was, he was, he was one of the younger officers, but he, he seemed to resonate with all of us. And certainly, the idea was, is that if anything ever went down, he, he could always figure out and find out what was going on in Delray Oaks first because the kids all knew about it first. And, and, and that worked, you know? I mean, bikes, if bikes got stolen, we usually generally found them and stuff like that. I was just kind of wondering if, if, if maybe we may kind of recreate that role with more kids. Actually, this is something too, is that in the last three years, I've watched more kids. My street now is filled with kids and it was, I mean, it was the doldrums for, for decades or for a decade now, but now there's more kids moving in. And it seems like it might be an opportunity. It's a growth industry, so.
I'll, I'll speak to that definitely. The chief, one of the chief's big, big priorities is the community responsive policing effort that we're running. And one of our, we have administrative areas of responsibility, and one of them specifically deals with, with that issue, community engagement. And we are very interested in, in doing that. And we, we were on our way, we were, we were getting there and we lost a few people that were getting trained to do that. So it is, it is on my radar and I'm very interested in start working with the community to start some programs like this.
Cool, thank you.
Chris, I'd just like to say we could put Officer Andaway on that. I don't think he's around or listening in, so. he's around or listening in, so he could be one of the kids.
Kristin, did you have anything?
Oh, I can't say enough about our police department. I always have. That's why we've moved here. That's why I stayed on the council. I think that even through the faults of the previous administrations, I think our police have always been a responsive, have been very responsive to the community. To the point where I've even been called in to help with a little old lady. I've told the story over and over again, you know, where she couldn't get up and they needed a woman there. They didn't have a woman, so they called me and I helped. And that's the type of city that we are. And that's, you know, even though we're a small town city, I think we're doing wonders now. Jeff, you've done a great job. And Chris, I am so proud of you. I've been waiting for this day for a long time. So I know you've had a lot of things that have gone on in the past, but I think the world of you. You're just such a kind individual.
Oh, thank you so much.
I just, you know, and that's how our police department is, you know? They take care of us. It's not just, I mean, if you went to any other city around here and you called them, you know, they're not going to just be there within five minutes. They just aren't. They're not going to pick you up off the sidewalk when you fall down. And that's what you guys do, and I'm so proud of you. I only have one request. I'm waiting for those baseball cards.
Oh, interesting.
Remember, I'd like to see our police on baseball cards.
Oh, man, that's right. Yeah.
I know I mentioned it before, Jeff, but I'm still looking for them.
My head will fit on a baseball card. We'll see.
I think that'd be great for our community. And yes, John, you're right. We have, on my street alone, I know we have, we have so many more children. So, and it's nice. Our children actually play on the streets. They put up a cone in front.
Yeah.
And they, you know, they boldly go where no child has gone before. And so that's, I'm really happy that they can feel free to play in the streets. Anyway, baseball cards would be great.
Thank you.
I just want to echo everything everybody else has said. Literally, while we were talking about this, an officer just went by the cul-de-sac, which is why I was looking to see what was going on. And it always, it's a comfort to have those lights come around every now and then, just to know that they're around. I also want to really thank you for doing the autism training and working with the person in town that kind of helped spark that. Kristin, I too was just in an instance with a young woman, and Chief was very helpful. And I was there and I wasn't there, but it was responsive. And there was a great deal of care given, care and time for this person. And I know they really appreciated it, as did I. The only thing I want to suggest is a dog.
Yeah.
Dog. So, and the kids, right? That'll help with the kids. I do know that a friend of mine who's a mom, their 13-year-old daughter is making a conscientious effort to go down to the park. And so, you know, the more we can do to make sure parents feel safe about that kind of activity, as well as the kids, the better. And if there's more and more kids involved, I think that is really the basis for the community feeling safe and happy. So, and I just wanted to mention to those in the public that the strategic plan was from 2019 to 2021. So you're smack dab in the middle of it. And so I'm not surprised that you're making great progress addressing the items that you identified before. So again, thank you very much for doing this and the training and everything else that we kind of take for granted because we live here and we've moved here to be in a safe community. So I want to go out to the public and see, Chris, are you okay to answer questions?
I am.
Okay.
Not hard ones, only easy ones.
Softballs. Anyone in the public have a question or comment? Karen?
I just want to thank the police department for being so responsive and for the department for being so proactive in developing the strategic plan and working on it so well. The training is really impressive to see it laid out there and to have it transparently posted on the website proudly just makes me feel even better about our city. As though, living by myself in my house, it makes me feel really good to have this police department. And I've even had wellness checks. You know, what city does that? You know, Delray Oaks. And that's the kind of community I'm really proud to be a part of. And a big part of that is our police department. So thanks for keeping us safe, making us feel comfortable in our homes, and just being so responsive. I mean, you're there within minutes. And I couldn't be more happy. So thank you for continuing to even improve. Well done.
For your support, ma'am.
Any other public comments, public questions? I'm not seeing any hands. So I'll come back. I also just want to mention, thank you so much for solving the recent issues, the robbery and the frog pond issues. Those things can blossom quickly, you know, if there's a vulnerable, and so I'm really appreciative that those were very quickly short.
The guys put in a lot of hard work. And hopefully, when we're done with COVID, maybe we'll be able to haul them in front of City Council for a little proclamation or something that Chief will put together for them. It'd be fun.
Yeah, that'd be wonderful. And I just have a question. The ride along I took sticks in my mind any and every time I think about our police. Are those, are you doing those these days? Shall we wait until after the pandemic? It was invaluable for me to understand. I was able to see some of the training happening and just the back and forth between shifts. Is that something that is, that we need to be very, very careful about?
Well, certainly, we need to be careful. Having said that, we haven't said that folks can't ride with us. We don't have that policy. In fact, I know that we're working diligently on the police.
Advisory?
Yeah, advisory committee. And it's our hope that the folks that are appointed would want to come and ride with us. We think it's very important. So we're going to encourage it strongly that they do. So if you want to ride with us, let us know. We do come into contact with most everybody that might have everything. So because of our jobs, we don't have a choice about where we go and when we go there. So we don't want to get anybody sick. I would say if you're liable to be affected strongly by COVID, then I would suggest maybe waiting. We'll be there.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, as John pointed out, that this strategic plan was in progress much before the death of Mr. Floyd. But the front doesn't indicate the length of time that they've been working on this. And once you start reading into it, you discover that this all started in March of 2017. And I just wanted to point it out how proactive our police have been, as well as their being so wonderful and efficient and friendly and everything positive about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
All right. Well, Chris, nice presentation, by the way. You did good.
I did my best. We'll see what my chief says tomorrow.
Well, thank you again.
All right, thank you.
So we're going to move on to staff reports. Acting City Manager, please go first.
Chris, you lived to fight another day. Well done. Mayor, council, members of the public, the first thing I'd like to say in light of what Chris just said was probably the most important thing is our department feels more supported in this community than probably any police department I've worked for. And that's a big part of our success. The council supports us and the community supports us, and it makes it easier to go that extra mile. So thank you. I'm pleased to give my first City Manager support as your acting City Manager. The first thing and most important, Dino says hello. He made sure that I would pass that along to everybody and the community, and that he misses being here and he misses everyone that he works with. But he's doing well and he's busy and he's probably doing all sorts of secret stuff that I probably couldn't talk about anyway. First, our city and the community, our COVID update, City Hall remains partially open. Staff is working staggered hours and on and off so that we're limiting contact as much as we can. We try to do things by appointment. And whenever possible, drop-ins we'll try to accommodate using the health precautions that are mandated. The parks are open in line with the Monterey County parks. We open them. The restaurants are open and they're being cleaned on a schedule. And same thing, Ron is doing an exceptional job making sure that things are clean and well maintained down in our parks. Election traffic is constant. It's a very popular election season. Everybody comes in on a daily basis. We get numerous people. It does not seem to have slowed down yet. Recently, the Sustainable Delray Oaks and some associated folks took place in two cleanups in our community along South Boundary Road and the creek. And the city staff, specifically Ron, collaborated where we could and helped out where we could. But it's nice that these groups continue to make this a more beautiful and livable place. And it's part of what makes our city special. We continue to work at the council's direction, looking at a 30% design for South Boundary Road as one of the major Public Works projects, as well as working with Tamsi and Fortag, who I've met with several times, either in person or via Zoom, walked the entire pathway, gave a lot of feedback that I've gotten from citizens and that some of the council has gotten from citizens about design and safety and maintaining neighborhood characteristics as much as possible. They took a lot of that feedback. And in some of their reports back to me, they have implemented some of those things, or they have shown that they've really cared. One of which was I really stressed crime prevention through environmental design as that trail comes through our community. And they actually did an addendum as part of their guidelines on the project trail on, specifically on that particular topic. Budget and finance, we work with the government services on the city's financial workload transition. I'm going to give a shout out to Karen as she's bridging that gap as Kim has left, and she's kept things moving smoothly in the clerk's office. When it comes to city businesses, one of the exciting things is we have an application for new owners for Mbam. And we've had extensive discussions. We've received the permit fees. And a lot of the discussion revolves around not only having a quality business in the city, but their interaction with us and their desire to work with the city to make that corner and that entrance to our city more pleasant with upgrades to not only the exterior of the building, but lighting, security concerns, and also landscaping. Public Works, I can go on and on and on. Ron's a one-man wrecking crew. He was out temporarily, and we had a worker from Smith and Enright, the acting Ron, as I like to call him. He has been assisting Ron in doing several things. Some of the things you may notice if you go down by the Garden Center, the trail gate that is typically closed and we'd have to lock and unlock it and lock and unlock it. And sometimes we'd miss it and people would be delayed or they'd have to reroute and go around. We've now put up a bollard there with only a partial gate, so that is open, leading for people to be able to get through there early in the morning and in the evening without interference or without worrying if that gate is open. So that is a permanent solution. One of the things we are looking at is some of our gating solutions throughout the city, including the park entrance for the parking lot to make it accessible to pedestrians, but also to be able to secure that parking lot at night so that cars and vehicular traffic and people we may not want down there when the park is closed have limited access. And more coming on that hopefully next month. Public Works also made several repairs on the wreck trail between Villa Verde and the park. There's railroad ties that needed replacement, and Ron is continuing to work on those trails to keep them safe and keep them passable so that our city can use them. The police department, I can probably skip over most of that. As you know, we've been solving crimes. Acting Chief Perkwin has stepped in wonderfully and is really taking the bull by the horns and moving things forward. Our police advisory committee is being structured, and preparations are being made. Forms are being made for applications. Processes are being worked out. And we're putting together a day-long training curriculum for familiarization for our police department. Those things are coming along quicker than I thought. And hopefully, right around the first quarter of this next year with new council in, we'll be able to go through that process, make selections, and have a really good working relationship with that committee to move our police department, our city, even farther. Some of the things that, technical stuff that is important are new laws. One is the Racial Identity Profiling Act that takes place. And it's staggered when cities start to work with that. I believe next year is when we're required to start collating data and gathering data about traffic stops and things like that. It's a very complicated law. Acting Chief Perkwin's been listening in on a couple of days of training. And it's going to change our processes a little bit. But he is on top of that, as well as Nibers and Cybers, that's our crime reporting efforts that we have to do at the state and the national level. And that is one of the things that our new records management system that's coming in at the end of the year is going to help us with. Our old record system would not have been able to allow us to do that. And then coming up as well, several members of the police department this next week will be participating in a socially-distanced law enforcement torch run for Special Olympics. The law enforcement torch run is one of the major funders for Special Olympics across the country. And we will be one of the agencies in the county that is still participating. So if you see us running through the city, I'm not sure of the route, but I think we're coming through the city a little bit. Some tweaks have been made, so I'm not entirely sure. And then Kyle Baum is in a uniform. He's out patrolling your streets and helping us here at the station. I know a lot of you are, as well as I, pleased to see Kyle back. And we're working on hiring Ozel Murray as a volunteer, probably through the first of this next, first part of this next calendar year, at which time we're hoping he works out and he transitions into a reserve officer for us. I'm happy to answer any questions. Sorry it was a little long. I haven't done this before, but those are just some of the things that we've been working on here at the city.
That was perfect. All right, let's move on to John. Would you like to start?
So, of course, four is no longer. The water master hasn't had a meeting since spring, actually, since, really, kind of since the COVID thing. We basically haven't had any items on there. So it's only left Monterey One. And Monterey One has had four meetings since our last meeting. They had a board meeting last night. We had recycle water committee, and we have an ad hoc JPA rewriting committee, which I'm on all three of those boards. And all of that culminated in last night's board meeting. With regard to the rewrite, the JPA rewrite ad hoc, that, the, I guess, the most contentious part of it, really, the purpose of it is to recalculate the formula for the weighted vote within the JPA. It was initially written in 1974. It was initially written in 1974, and Salinas was never anticipated to have greater than 100,000 people, and now they have, I believe, 160,000, or no, they have 120,000. And so they do not have all the weighted votes that, or their vote, their weighted vote is not commensurate with the other jurisdictions that, based on their populations. So we've been tasked to go back there, and the long assured is we can't come to any consensus on how to do that. So last night, we thought we might, we thought we had some consensus, and we thought it might go out to the jurisdiction. Once it leaves Monterey One Board, it will go to all of our jurisdictions, and we will all individually, the member jurisdictions, will vote on that to either amend or not amend the JPA based on that recommendation. And we just can't seem to get it out of our board. So it went back to staff, and we have an ad hoc meeting again next month, and we'll see what we can come up with on that. So on that, basically, just stay tuned. And then, we had a recycled water committee update, which, that's the good news, and that is, or I'm sorry, the Pure Water Monterey update. As many of you have known, and Paul Schudo has come and alighted our council many times, that we have four injection wells that have all been troubled since commissioning. The deep wells basically were operating about 30% of their capacity, and the two shallow wells were basically, they were digging out, they're in sand, and they were undermining themselves. So all four wells had to be rebuilt. That whole evolution has now been completed. And the shallow wells will probably never really be anything more. It was an experiment to begin with, and we don't have much faith in that, but they seem to be kind of producing about 40% of their capacity. But the real good news is that both the deep wells are now, I believe, 80 and about 90% capacity after the rebuilding and recharging. And on top of that, to mitigate the losses on the shallow well, we've gone back to the state, and the Water Management District has ponied up $3.5 million to drill four, to drill two more deep wells. And so that's all been approved, and bids went out, and the contract was awarded last night. And that should start, and we should start, that will all get drilled over spring, from now until spring. It'll be commissioned over the summer, and by this time next year, all four wells should be operating. We are now beyond the 1,000-acre foot set aside, and we've put now 200 acre, and all of that, basically, just consider that zero. Now, every drop of water that goes in is now available to the peninsulas. And so we've put in a total of 1,200 acre feet, of which 200 now can be drawn back out in three or four months. So we're, and we're kind of off to the races with Pure Water Monterey, the Pure Water Monterey Project. So that's all good news. And that's really kind of, that's the update.
Thanks, John. I want to, before I go to you, Louise, I want to offer Dennis an option if you'd like to say something about the waste management. Dennis?
Thank you very much. The, we had our meeting last, this past Friday. I think the most significant thing for the people of Delray Oaks is the ongoing effort to figure out what to do to reinvigorate, reinitialize, whatever term you want to use, the Last Chance Mercantile. Of course, there was the issue with COVID-19 and the uncertainty regarding the budget. Well, the good news is, on the budget, is that revenues have actually come in stronger than was anticipated in a very conservative effort on the budget to make sure that we did not spend more money than we brought in for the district. And the Last Chance Mercantile was, of course, closed because of all the retail businesses that were closing down at the time. And the staff were furloughed. The staff actually lost their jobs that supported the Last Chance Mercantile. Well, they've come back with an interesting proposal to how they would operate the Last Chance Mercantile. But in addition to that, the staff has gone out with an RFQ to solicit other parties that might be interested in operating the Last Chance Mercantile. It was a losing, it's a business that was losing money for the district, and it was an obvious place to cut back on when we were looking to figure out how we were going to make it through the year. But staff has done an excellent job. We've got some interesting possibilities now, and I think that will, I have a great deal of confidence that the Last Chance Mercantile will be back up and running in the not-too-distant future. Probably a different format than what it's been done in the past, but there's been enough input from the public that says that they want it, and staff is figuring out how to do it. Other than that, it was basically a good news meeting in terms of the budget. There were, the staff out there at the district, across the board, the CEO, general manager, Tim Flanagan, took a 10% pay cut. Staff, the rest of the staff curtailed or held in the bands their cost of living adjustment. And what we agreed to at the last meeting was is that we'll do a look back at this in January, and if the budget, actuals continue to come in better than projected, we'll revisit the cost of living adjustment that was, or stalled, and implement that retroactively back to the 1st of October, and potentially all the way back to the 1st of fiscal year. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Louise, did you want to say something?
Real briefly, my report is in the agenda, but a quick recap is that the United Veterans Council for Monterey County has made arrangements to have the Veterans of the Year ceremony held at 10:00 a.m. on the 6th of November in the county supervisor office, county supervisors' chamber, but it will be limited to attendees and one guest, awardees and one guest, some support staff, and the supervisor, and they'll be rotated in, the supervisor from the district that the awardees belong to, and be socially-distanced. It will be videoed and sent over Zoom, probably only for people related to the awardees. But there is a strong possibility that the entire ceremony would be trans, broadcast on the local cable TV channels also. Not much going on in the area of mosquitoes. Pretty much, it's the end of the season. They're finishing up the last mulling and applications and getting ready to do training and equipment maintenance over winter. And the Association Monterey Bay Area Governments did the final draft, final, final, not-so-final draft of their regional growth forecast, which kind of rolls into the housing needs and the briefing we had at the beginning of today's session. It's interesting. I did extract, and is in the packet, the briefing slides from that. There were some contentions about the numbers from San Benito County, so there may be another final draft coming next month. What is interesting, when you look at the numbers for Delray Oaks, as far as number of housing units, for the next about 15 years, they, their forecast is only for another 100 units or so over the next 12 to 15 years. But then there's a growth spurt of another about 250 units, so that by 2045 is the end of this forecast session, there's a little over 1,000, I think it was 1,025 or so housing units that they anticipate or forecast being needed in Delray Oaks. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. I really appreciated the growth report being included, so thank you. Pat? Pat, you're muted.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. Chris, you gave a nice presentation, and Jeff, you gave a nice, informed report. And it's hard taking over two new positions, and you're both doing an outstanding job, and thank you. Seaside sanitation meeting was canceled again, but I have been informed, because I've been kind of bugging them about the Rosita lift station. It's not very attractive, and numerous residents have complained about it to me. But I was advised that the negotiations with PG&E were completed and that the work would commence on the Rosita lift station. I did notice last week that there were several people working on it and so on, so hopefully it will progress very rapidly, and we'll get rid of that horrible fence, so. Community Human Services, there was a presentation of the draft audit. It was a clean audit, and there were no material weaknesses. And there was a presentation regarding the 100-day challenge. That's to help the age group 18 to 24 that are homeless. It was successful. There were 40 housed, including eight children. There's 14 in the process, and there's 107 being assessed. And it was reported that the funds for the Casa de Noche Buena are going well. The Coalition of Homeless Services Providers and other youth-serving agencies are creating a youth advisory board, which will be really good. And there was an emergency item which was not included on the agenda in the packet, and that was the approval of the salary for the program officer for Casa de Noche Buena, and it was approved, and the strategic plan was approved. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Kristen?
I attended MST, and the report is in the back. It's pretty straightforward, so I don't have much else to add to that. I am so happy about Last Chance Mercantile, Dennis. I have a lot of stuff at my house, at my mother's house, because we can't have a garage sale, so I have a lot of stuff to donate, so I was really happy to hear about that. And Louise, I just got bit by some mosquitoes a couple days ago. Just wanted to let you know. It's almost over. That's all I have to say.
All right. So I continue to have regular weekly meetings with the Monterey County executive level, supervisors and other folks. Ongoing discussions evolve around the effects of COVID and measures to ensure protections while discussing what and how to open particular segments of local businesses. Overall, our numbers in California on a whole are faring better than other states and regions. However, we are still in the purple zone. But thank you for doing your part to make sure you and your neighbors are safe. I also have weekly check-ins with Acting City Manager and legal counsel to receive updates on forward-moving movement of tasks. Community campfires on October 1st. I was honored to host Monterey County Elections Registrar of Voters Claudio Valenzuela, who was able to share about everything that he has implemented for our election season. He was actually able to tell us all that the ballots went out five days early on that evening with all of the expanded options, the libraries, the new full-service location at Embassy Suites. Additionally, Carol Rojas was there, who runs our Old Town Hall polling location. She informed me that there will be a drive-through ballot drop-off in the parking lot, so folks don't have to walk up and go into the small area of Old Town Hall. So, but there may be a couple of breaks where people have to go and have a meal or something like that. So if you haven't voted and you're waiting until election day, it will be safe. There will be a drive-by and traffic support and everything like that. I'd also like to extend a huge thank you to all of the poll workers who will be working that day from 6:30 until about 9:30. And a special thank you to our own Karen and Randy, who have committed to being at City Hall, so we all have the option to be able to go and drop our ballots off there. And Carol, again, for all of her years, making sure we have a nice, pleasant experience at Old Town Hall. The notes for the Transportation Agency for Monterey County, TMC, are also included in the agenda packet. I have a meeting tomorrow where we will be approving a design firm that will guide the Delray Oaks segment of Fortag. So that's exciting, and we're hoping to have some timelines as to public outreach and things like that to help move that project along. So that's exciting. September 28th, I attended the final Water Authority meeting. The water situation, as we all know, has shifted quite a bit since the Water Authority was active, and everyone felt prudent to dismantle the entity. So it has already saved the city quite a bit of money, so that entity is no longer. October 5th, I attended a monthly, quarterly, with COVID, League of California Cities discussion with Paul Mitchell of Political Data, Inc. They provide all of the voter information for candidates and also supply a daily tracker of returned ballots with demographic information. As a math nerd, I love looking at the numbers and the percentages, and, you know, as of 2 o'clock today, 54% of all Delray Oaks voters have already returned their ballots, and it's fun to watch those numbers go up and down. Excuse me. Other key points that he mentioned was California is far ahead of other states with our automatic voter registration, with DMV registration, which is kicking in. California is undergoing significant demographic changes, and that will slowly show up in voter registration. So, for example, Republicans have lost registration numbers. Independents have grown significantly, and Democrats have held constant. And millennials and Gen Z are the largest segment of voter files. So it's going to be interesting over the next decade or so how that affects elections. Later that afternoon, I met with Jan Lindenthal of Mid Penn Housing to discuss her presentation this evening. I felt it was important for all of us to begin having that conversation, and I'm really glad that she was there, or that she was able to join us. Also attended the sign committee meeting. We're moving forward. It's a lot more complicated than everybody thinks, and blending charts and making things easier is not so easy. But we have another meeting coming up, I believe, next week. Thursday, October 8th, I attended a Smart Cities Future Zoom conference, which was really interesting, looking at how, kind of looking into the future of how we can accelerate the application of technology to better reef community needs and priorities. So, for example, how is our transportation going to be shifted as we transition to electric and autonomous vehicles and drones for delivery? And how the shift to working from home, what implications that will have on commercial real estate? And also, how much easier it is to access your local government with Zoom and being online now for so many people? And basically, it was about And basically, it was about learning from tragedy and creating less vulnerability for the future. So I'm looking forward to the next series of, of those discussions. As we heard a little earlier, the Mayor's Advisory Committee for Emergency Response met and finalized the brochure that I hope all of you received on your doorstep. I think it's an important information for all of us to have as we're anticipating more wildfires and other climate-related instances, just to be, for everybody to be prepared. So I want to thank Mary Solzang for spearheading the project and heading the committee. And lastly, on Saturday, the 17th, the Mayor's Advisory Committee for Arts and Culture met to discuss creating a logo and how to proceed with a possible mural project at Safeway. And again, another thank you to Connor Richardson for keeping us together during the pandemic, which has been difficult for artists not to meet in person. So that's all I have for now. Louise, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I wanted to mention on the emergency preparedness flyer, Mary did email me and unfortunately, it went into my spam mail. I responded and said that if she would email me, if you could, if you have it in digits, I can send it to the Homeowners Association Management to have it posted and email blasted to the residents here. You're muted.
All right. Thank you, Louise. I'll make sure she gets it. I appreciate that. So all the reports are complete and now we're moving on to correspondence. There's quite a bit, so hopefully everybody has a chance to take a look. Of particular note, other than our board highlights, is the officer recognition letters for solving the, I do believe it's the car thefts. So they're getting recognition not only from us, but also from victims. So that's nice. Next item is a closed session where we will discuss existing litigation with the California Native Plant Society versus Bordered Reuse Authority. And I do believe the second item, Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, is no longer relevant? The Douglas McKenzie versus City?
I do think we will discuss it briefly, Mayor, in a closed session.
Okay. So I want to go out to the public, see if anybody has any comments on the closed session item. Seeing no hands from the public, I'm going to bring it back. And we will go into a separate room and we will come back. So all of you are welcome to stay and hang out and we'll be back when we're done.
So just a quick report out, Madam Mayor. As to both items on closed session, an update was provided to the council. Direction was given to the city attorney and the city acting city manager, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you, Alex. All right, our next meeting is early in November. It's Tuesday, November 17, 2020, at 6 o'clock. On that, we're adjourned. Thank.
Good night, all.
Good night, everyone.